Welcome to the Catholic Entrepreneurship and Design Experience Monthly Groundwork Session. Thank you for coming. This month, we'll be digging deeper into Module 12, Where It Ends, It Begins. This is the last module of the SEED program. And it's kind of cool that we started this process 12 months ago of going through each module, month by month, beginning in January with Module 1. And here we are, December 7th, 2021. What's great about this module, again, Module 12 out of 12 modules. So we're finishing up. And the big thing to know here that this is when the students deliver their capstone deliverables. So they have been working throughout the SEED program to compile and work toward, they're compiling this thing called the moral compass. And then they're working toward what we call the Odyssey Project. And in a nutshell, basically, the Odyssey Project is them making a declarative statement that because of their experience in SEED and what they've discovered about themselves, this is what they plan to do in the next year or two with that knowledge. And this is why it's called an Odyssey. So it's basically them going through the SEED program, heavily reflecting lots of journal work. Every module has a project and it's having an impact on them. And in fact, we learned in Module 10 around the meaning of work that there are three, three things, three elements of work, especially according to St. Pope John Paul II, the subjective, the objective, and then the transcendent, right? The part of work that grows us as a soul, as the image of God. And so that's what the Odyssey Project is. And the moral compass is another kind of project where they're reflecting, they're compiling, but they're also expressing what they've learned. And it's got actually some pretty important questions for you to cover to help them prepare. So we'll go over those as well. And with all of, every single module in the SEED program, there are a standard set of documents. One of them is the student prompt. So I always like to start with what's in the student prompt. So let me just turn on my screen share here really quick. Module 12, Your Moral Compass. And this is something that you, this is a document that you deliver directly to the students right before you begin, preferably before any, any of the elements of Module 12 are approached so that the student can have this personal encounter with the curriculum. And that's one of our five foundational values of the SEED program. Personal encounter, creativity, truth-seeking knowledge, language, incarnation and wonder. So this is an encounter that is hopefully beginning the, the truth-seeking dialogue and then creating a sense of wonder in them and creativity kind of tips the hand, the hat of, tips the hand on what they're going to be doing in this module. So it sets up their creative purpose and which then they go and create. And we always favor incarnation. So see how quickly those work together. It's very simple. You don't have to overcomplicate it, but it starts with a link and it actually starts with a question. It says, was it worth it? So our hope in designing the document this way and delivering it to the student as a prompt for the modules, that they would click on this link. And it takes them, actually, it would take them out right away. We send them a document and then we take them over here to a website that is basically about a compilation of, of the regrets of the dying as collected by people that work in palliative care. The goal here is that the students are reflecting kind of to the point of the name of the module, where it ends, it begins. If you think back to Module 1, their project for Module 1, to begin the whole SEED program is to write their own eulogy of their ideal life. Now, some of you, as you know, we have some options in there. If that's too macabre, if you don't want to really go that far, there are some other options to writing a eulogy. But I've heard from several of our facilitators that that is actually what they chose to do. And it's very powerful. They even began their first class in a cemetery, which it, you know, that takes courage. And courage is a virtue, it's a good for you. And we're trying to have this, again, we're creating an encounter for the students. So right away in the prompt, Module 12, they get a link out to this site where it is talking about the regrets of the dying. So we want them to go here and read as much of this as they will. It's actually quite short. There's only five things, right? So five regrets on your deathbed? That's not bad, but this is the ones that are the most popular, right? So back to the prompt. So they go out, they read the regrets of the dying. And then we're going back to what, was it worth it? Well, what is it? It is your life, this course, that game. And as you can see, it's written in a language and a voice that's hopefully speaking directly to them as a, as a human with dignity and value in life. And, and they are, they're, by the time they get here, they're accustomed to this, right? So essentially what this is doing, here's the main point. That undertaking is that we're talking about here is their moral compass and their Odyssey Project. So here they go. This is the prompt. The moral compass is not like anything else you've ever created. Now they know about this, right? You, we've been talking about it all along. In fact, one of the lectures in Module 1 is about what is a moral compass? Not the project, but in the idea of it as a paradigm, as an approach to life. So it's not about theory or repeating back what the teacher said. These are your answers and yours alone. So in here are the nine prompts that I want to cover. But before we get to that, here's one important possible gotcha, right? I would encourage as much as possible, and we talk about this in Module 1 as well for the student prompt, that this is not about them reaching necessarily excellence during this course. This is about them making the effort to grow, right? Taking the adventure and going on that voyage to create their own self, to discern who, how they were created and that sort of thing. So I actually am here advocating right now to think about, if you, if you're thinking about grading the work of the student, there's, I could make a strong moral case here. I could make a strong argument that it really should be pass fail. Because, and I'm biased, right? I'm totally biased in saying so because I helped to create it. I helped to cultivate it. I hope I helped to curate it, all the wonderful things that you do when you, when you bring learning forth for a person, for a student. So if, if it is true that if they do the work, they will have the experience that helps them to discern their creation, their vocation, and what it means to be an entrepreneur, then I think they should just pass, right? And, and you know, because there's, there's a ton of work. I mean, you know, those of you joining us, you know, this is a ton of work that, that is done. But if you're looking for, and in fact, I'm tipping my hat to the notes that I got from, from Kiran to prepare for the pedagogical side of this, right? This is a summative assessment of their work, right? So we're going to ask them these questions. You will create your own, own moral compass as a personal expression of your choice. Now, it used to be called, and in fact, at the Management 118, Vocation 118 course that this is built on from Catholic University, the Bush School, that all business major declared freshman take, Vocation 118 is the, the genesis of this course, the SEED program. They all have to write a moral compass paper, but that's higher ed. Their, their look, that's the kind of thing that Catholic University is looking for. Can they write? So we changed it for the SEED programs, especially because we're dealing with younger students. And we want to actually work to bring the SEED program to younger and younger students as we go. That's one of our long-term goals is to get this into the hands of younger students. So we wanted to give them the freedom of expression here, right? You may write a paper, record a video, draw a comic strip. That wasn't an idea that we came up with. That was actually created and we loved it. So we added it in here. Or how about an infographic or something completely unique? Now, of course, as an instructor facilitator of learning, you could require that their vehicle that they choose, their creative outlet is pre-approved by you. I would totally hand on heart say that that's okay with me if you wanted to do that. I mean, that way they're not going completely off the rails and you don't get fully surprised. But it also will give you a chance to have an encounter with a student, have some truth-seeking dialogue about what it is that they hope to create. And who knows, they might show you something completely novel. And if they do, I want to see it. So thank you very much. Let me know. But that's the goal, right? We want them to be able to express themselves here using their moral compass. That's why we don't call it the moral compass paper anymore. It's basically just them responding to these prompts. So prompt number one, they're actually pulling from their modules. So this know your design module, that's Module 2. So this is work they've already done. They're growing in virtue plan assignment from Module 5, Freedom to Be More. So that again, we've already done this work. Your life's mission statement from the know your design module, also from Module 2. So you've seen this, they've done this. So in a way, the moral compass to me, especially combined with the Odyssey Project, and we'll talk about that soon, this all kind of becomes more of a portfolio than a capstone deliverable, right? It's not something that they're actually creating, but maybe it's, especially if they choose a different way of expressing this, maybe if they do an infographic, they can just include these items. I think that'd be really, a really kind of simple way to do it. That would be very impactful for me, being able to see how the students' experience went. So that, you know, just editorializing here, the list of rules to live by you created in the Good to Great Module, that's Module 11, right? And then, okay, now we're getting into new work here with prompts 5 through 9. Explain your vision for your life in terms of how you determine who you want and don't want to become, and describe why you choose it and how you have pursued it in the past, and how you pursue your vision in the future in all areas of your life. Give examples of specific things you want to do or achieve that will help you work toward your ideal life. Now, I have learned from my colleagues that teach Vocation 118 at the Catholic University to undergrads, there is a severe risk here of students creating responses to this that sound like basically a cliche machine, right? Like they just went and made some stuff up. This is partly why we want them to pursue more than just the paper, right? So they might respond differently if this is in terms of they're, they're drawing a sequence of stories in, or frames inside of a comic book, right? So explain your vision of your life in terms of how you determine who you want or don't want to become, and describe why you choose it. Okay, so we need to like really hearken back to their, their way of learning, right? And I'm sure those of you that are, you know, well-trained teachers have, that have been doing this for years and years, you've found different vehicles and ways to use the multiple intelligences. And I, you know, so if you have thoughts or comments, I'd love to hear them. Kiran always gives this great advice about the writing process. He always cautions us against just have, telling the students, go write, go write about this. And so one of the things that I will share with you is this link that's in the chat that is about how to help students be better writers. And again, this is why we want to, to make it not just to be a written thing. But I think this process right here can also be helpful if, if they're, if they're doing multiple iterations, perhaps that we like, we've learned in Module 4 about the design process, about how there's basically just, you don't want to just take the first thing that comes off the top of your head. You want to kind of go through a process of, of basically revisions, of iterations, things that we've talked about already, and then maybe getting some feedback. So this might be a good spot for your students to, to do some group work around, well, explain to each other, like break into groups. This would be a great small group prompt to give to some folks where they could just chat it out, right? This is also a pretty long prompt, so it might be good to like break it up into bullets so that then that will structure the conversation of the young people that are in the small groups as they're preparing for this. So, so again, we're at the end of the program and hopefully we can build in time to do all this kind of prep work that will help the students to turn in a more mature, flushed out, you know, idea of what, what we were looking here for the moral compass deliverable, right? So maybe give a bullet point here, break, explain your vision for your life in terms of who you do want, maybe even turn that into two statements, right? And put that up. And then talk about, this is great. So this, this right here reminds me how, this is, reminds me of the achievement stories from Module 2. So perhaps they could, you could remind them of that, right? How have you pursued it in the past? And then these, this is just conjecture, right? We're just talking about the future. We're dreaming here, how will you pursue this vision in the future? So anyway, just thinking about how we prep the students to get past the kind of cliche, contrite things that they might say if they were just doing this to get it done. And I know especially those of you that are professional educators, this is like your life. This is where you live. So anyway, just wanted to share that before we went into block or part two of, or I'm sorry, point six of the prompt. Describe your true north. True north is basically what life is all about for you. If, if we go back to this idea of the compass, which I love, where's my compass? This idea of having a vision for yourself, a connection to your created vocation about your virtues, your values, your goals, right? That would then be your, your true north of pointing you in the direction, right? But it's also talking about your, your, well, we can go back to the moral compass description. But essentially, all they have to do here is create a list of your top five priorities in life and top five roles you will play in life. So those of you that are working with young people, I think this would be fruitful in getting them past maybe the top three or top two that they're conceiving of themselves, right? Top five priorities is, is fairly certain, right? Like that's a good number. It might go to five or it might go to 10. But this idea of the top five roles that you will play, I don't think, in fact, I know that when I was 17, I was definitely not interested in being a father then. But I know that as a father in my 40s now, as a married man, that's like my number one role. I love being a father. I love being a husband. So I'd be really curious to see. And then we're going to force rank them. I think this is wonderful. I think the pastor at my, my church here that I go to, really, this is a thing for him. Having your, basically your priorities straight, right? Knowing that God is first, right? He actually told me once, God, wife, children. And he basically said, that's it. Those are your priorities. And then have them write or share, we should, we should actually expand that to be about share, how you will balance your life among these priorities. So kind of whatever is appropriate for their medium of choice beyond writing. And then tell the audience why you chose these priorities and roles and what you see as the trade-offs you are willing to make in order to put these first. Now there's an interesting concept, right? Because there's always a trade-off. So this is a big one as well that you might want to, if you, I'm sorry, you might do a little writing exercise to help them prep for this, right? So they're going to create their priorities in life and they're in their top five roles. And then they're going to rank them. And then they're going to write about how they balance their life. So it's a lot of work is, is a good thing to think of. But we're going to balance this with this describing your south pole, the things you want to avoid. All right, so this is also a great place to challenge them to come up with more like, hey, it's not enough to say, I don't want to go to jail, or I don't want to get divorced, or I don't want to hurt people. But what else? What are the things that you know you won't do? And I had a mentor once tell me like, that's one of the best things that you can, you can do. One of the most valuable words, especially for a young person or at any point is no. The thing that you won't do is actually, and knowing what you won't do can be extremely valuable for a human being in their life, right? So describe their south pole, but help them to get beyond, we want them to go beyond the cliche, right? The, the simple things that, that we want to see. Actually, what I would love is, you know, to the surprise. I love to be surprised by young people, especially if we help push them out of just the things that they're already, you know, that, that they would think they need to say, right? That they feel like they should say. So then it challenges them with how will you do this? And then very specific actions. So it's almost like they're making these mini plans in here. And then end with a sentence or two, or a word or two, or a picture or two, however they're going to express this, that answers the questions, what are you trying to achieve in your life? And to what end? Why, right? Like the five, the five whys, always asking why in order to what? These are some of my favorite questions to ask. And then back to work they've already done from Module 2, they include their future authoring paper. Now back, one, one catch, possible snafu about the future authoring paper is that when they were prompted to write that, they were told that it was completely anonymous. So they might want to redact some things from it. That's a, that's kind of a delicate situation. If they did write it and they were told that it was private for themselves, you want to definitely, you know, address that when you're, when you're talking to them about that and that they go back and kind of maybe reread the future authoring paper, maybe redact some things that make it appropriate to turn into you so that they feel comfortable as well. We always want them to feel like they're safe in the space of, you know, the classroom or wherever you're delivering this material. So back to, we're still in the student prompt here, right? So this is still, all, all of this is stuff that's delivered directly to the student before they begin. And then, so we cover the nine elements of the moral compass that they're, that they're creating. And then we get to the Odyssey Project presentation. So this is essentially a similar, a similar project for the students, but it's focused mostly on the student telling the story of how they progressed through the SEED program and then what they plan to do for the next year or two on their Odyssey project after they finish the SEED program. So you will present all the aspects of your Odyssey project in a multimedia article posted on Medium or your approved online location. So there are some risks. If you don't know, let me tell you, there are some risks with having students create content and post it online if something bad were to happen. And God knows all the crazy ways that bad things happen. We want to protect the young people. I just said, we want to make sure they feel safe. So maybe it's not really wise to have your students go and create a medium post. Maybe it is. Maybe it's something that they already have as part of their, their work or perhaps on your learning management system that you're using at your school or, or you can do it as a Google Doc if you're doing this as a homeschool. It doesn't have to be public. I think the original intent of creating it as a medium post would be so that we could share it broadly so that other SEED students can feel like they're part of something bigger than just their classroom. I know that as, as someone who's helped organizations to, to spread out nationally, globally, it, it always helps when you know as a participant that you're, it's not just you. It's not just at your local level, that you are a part of something that is bigger, that's happening in multiple places all across the globe. I mean, that just feels cool, but it just seems like it amplifies the importance, the, the impact of it. So just some, some words to the whys, and you probably have guidelines for that. If you don't, if you're doing this from, as a homeschool situation, something to think about. You want to, you want to protect your students' privacy, but we sure would like to see a good example. So you could always send them to me. I would love to get emails if it's appropriate with links or phone calls. However, you want to get it to me, we love seeing the, the work of your students. So if you do, the idea was that we're, we're going to collect, and we are collecting a library of these examples. But the Odyssey Project is really a presentation where they're writing a bit of words on their post, but they're sharing all of the videos, like they create a video in Module 9 that tells a story, they create a three-minute video, an Odyssey Project preview. So that would actually be something that there is there. In Module 3, they make a meal for somebody. So pictures, we have a teacher that does a Yelp-style review. So that would be a good thing to include there. Anything that they've created, they want to basically compile it all together. I think a really great website to use for this would be Prezi. Like if you, if you had students create prezis, that a person could just kind of float around and look at all the different things that the student had created during the SEED program. I think that would be really cool. I like Prezi. I'm not very good at it, but I've seen some really amazing ones. It's a great, great tool. We actually use Prezi for the Bush School. The Bush School has a universal virtue curriculum that we have students do. And the presentations for that are actually created in Prezi and they work really cool for that. So we're looking for, but for example, in terms of grading, this thousand words here, we're looking for them to prove the effort, right? Like if we said 100 words or 300 words, this was a kind of a bigger, a bigger creation on their part of expressing in words how their experience went for them. And it's also fantastic prep for what we really want is a five to seven-minute presentation of their Odyssey Project to the rest. So in your mind's eye, what I imagine is the student standing at the front of the class or on Zoom, and they share their screen, which has their Prezi or their medium post. And they're kind of basically just taking us on a journey through what they've shared on there. And with that, seven, seven minutes is really fast. It goes by really fast. I think part of the preparation for this is to help your students get a feel for what five to seven minutes actually feels like. So let me stop my share here real quick. So that is the student prompt for Module 12. We deliver that right away before they even begin. The, the other cool document that we have for facilitators is there's always a lesson guide. So I want to just kind of show that off really quick. Okay. And one of the things that we pointed out in Module 12, so this is the, the lesson guide for teachers. We have one of these for every module and it's written with the teacher in mind. So it has the title, Module 12, Where It Ends, It Begins, Staying the Course. So I've been helping high schools and middle schools teach entrepreneurship for 11 years now. And I can't tell you how many students I've met that when they find out, or alumni basically, they find out that, you know, that I work for the program that they were a part of, they get this guilt over them. And they'll say things like, oh, I never carried out my business plan. And I'm like, so? It was an exercise. Like you, how many people in the world have written a business plan as a 17-year-old? So don't discount that at all. And two, most businesses go out of business. So the fact that you saved yourself from that, maybe that's one twisted way to look at it. But they have this guilt because they didn't stay the course. They didn't go do the thing that they poured themselves into, heart, soul, you know, blood, sweat, tears, all the things, passion-driven, right? They didn't go do that. And that's where they have the guilt. So part of Module 2 is we want them to feel like and be convicted in staying the course, doing this thing that we're calling the Odyssey, the Odyssey Project. And we always have a quote, at least one from either from the Bible itself or from a religious, right? A lot of quotes from St. Francis in, in our coursework, a lot of Pope John Paul II. So right off the bat, we are calling out, what is the Catholic social teaching value that's covered here, right? And number one in this one to me is the call to, that universal call to participation. So basically, they have discovered this about, they've discerned this about their vocation, about their created purpose. And so they are now called, which is what vocation actually means, vocare. They are called to bring that forth in the world. You have to go and participate. And this is what I love about entrepreneurship education is it, is there's this, like, again, this like split where entrepreneurship is one thing and then everything else is everything else, right? Business is this other thing. It's not. Or, or entrepreneurship is this other thing, but if you're a musician, you don't need to study that. Or if you're just going to work with, you know, daycare or, or the elderly or, or the dying, you don't need to know about entrepreneurship. Wrong, absolutely wrong. No matter what you are going to do, no matter who you are, what you're, you're going to have to be is your discipline, you're going to have to find a customer. You're going to have to go to market and find a customer. So you are called to participation as an entrepreneur, no matter what, right? And that's one of, one of the things I love about the SEED program is that we're talking about entrepreneurship as a vocation that we are all called to. So here specifically in Module 12, we want to focus on the universal call to participation. And then the business values are always called out. What is your opportunity? But also this idea of responsibility. It pains me to note in that it's from the Spider, the original Spider-Man movie, that the quote, "Knowledge is power, but power is responsibility." That's a fantastic quote. You have to do something with what you've been given, right? Back to this universal call of participate, to participation. And then key principles, if you're, if people want to know, well, you know, what are they learning to do? And see, well, in particular, they're learning about how to give a presentation. They're learning how to reflect on something that happened, which is a very common practice among very successful organizations, right? This idea, ability to sit down and think about, okay, what happened, right? There's this idea of consistency and endurance and then wisdom and encouragement, right? And you'll see, that's something that we're going to get to here in a second of element two. And then always in the lesson guide, we want to give you, what, what materials do you need? So you're going to, and you're going to have a quick link so you can get out to it. We do have rubrics for the Odyssey Project and the moral compass. But if you click on those, which I guess I could do right now, they're under, they're underdeveloped. And we're actually currently working, something I wanted to show those of you that have joined us as a payoff for the very end of this, we have some new rubrics coming. They're, they're kind of in development mode. But essentially, this document, Moral Compass Rubric, is more of a checklist. And again, back to the idea of, did they do the work? I think they should get a passing grade. I just, if a student is, this is 19 things, by the way, that they have to check off the list. If they did this work, I think, I think that they should be counted as worthy. I find a little, I found a typo. Again, well, not again, I haven't told this group. But if you ever find anything in the Google Docs, and this is why we use Google Docs, if you find something that's weird, you can make a suggestion to correct it and it'll send me an email, which is a godsend when that happens. I love it. Plus, it just is nice to have people working in our stuff. So this is not really a rubric. We're calling it a rubric. It's more of a checklist. And I have a rubric that I will show you toward the end of the, the time today. And then, hey, guess what? You're going to need some copy paper and some number 10 envelopes because they're actually going to write letters of wisdom to the next class. We'll get to that. And then we're talking about kind of rough estimates of time. But the truth is, this is just for the presentations. So if you're going to be doing any of the moral compass prep work that we just kind of briefly talked on, like if you want to do small groups and break down the prompts and have them talk through some stuff, it's going to take way more than 90 minutes, I guarantee you. You might dedicate a whole, like multiple number of sessions to prepping for moral compass. And of course, I know time is their scariest resource. So that might not be a possible. And of course I know time is their scariest resource, so that might not be a possibility for you, but there's somewhere in between, right? There's somewhere to, to do that in between and seed is designed to be flexible. So you don't have to do what I say is gospel. I'm just a, a guy who wants to see your students be successful. So then, okay, so here we go. We always have a teacher overview, project instructions. Again, this is written for you, links to the rubrics or checklist as we talked about. And then block one is basically the students give the presentation. So reminder to you. But this is essentially block one is get the students to present their odysseys, Odyssey projects, and then hand in their moral compass. I mean, that's really it for block one. Block two, I love this. This is one of my favorites of the whole course. All of seed, I think this is a wonderful culmination, just a, a really cool act of dignity that we do. And we call it the wise send off. So the essential question is, what do you, you being the teacher, you being the facilitator, you who have shepherded the students through this entire process? What are your hopes for them? Have you told them? Well, this is your opportunity. Okay. So there's a video here that you, you would share with your students also, right? Called how to win at life. And we actually, uh, we heard from Father James Cuddy about this. Now this is a YouTube video. It's on our YouTube, on our playlist, uh, for module 12. By the way, we have, uh, we have a playlist on YouTube for every module, so that you can actually just use this really easy. But I will tell you this, that Father James Cuddy takes a drink of beer from a beer glass. Where is it at? Right about, uh, where is it? Just a heads up, right? Like, so if you're showing this to your 17 year old students. And you don't know that at some point he's going to reach down and grab a mug of beer, that might be a problem. So just a heads up. Um, of course he's, uh, you know, uh, obviously of some sort of religious order. I'm gonna, I'm not really great with this. I'm still learning. I think he's Dominican. They probably are okay with drinking beer. You know, and might, might, some might say that that's, uh, that's a kind of a Catholic thing to do. I don't know. Just, I, one of my jobs in these groundwork sessions is to give you the heads up for possible gotchas. Okay. So he's Dominican. Thank you. Yes. I'm learning. The white robes are Dominican and Stephen would know, cause for Zadi Catholic is run by Dominicans. There we go. So you, you want to watch that beforehand, right? So you prepare discussion notes, you watch this before you show it to your students. Have some blank copy paper and your number 10 envelopes ready, because they're going to write and steal what they write into a, an envelope. And then you, I, I can't, I can't, um, express this enough, right? That there is, um, there's this pedagogical theorist. Who lived, uh, in the 20th century is the greatest pedagog, pedagogical theorist that ever walked on the planet, right? And he said that you can't teach anyone anything. There is only learning and that the learner must choose to learn. And one of the ways that I've found that students are more willing to learn, when they choose to learn, when they wrestle their unbelief. And take what you're saying internally and reflect on it and, and learn from it. Is if you yourself have gone that path also, like if you are, if you're not willing to do what you're asking them to do, should you ask them to do it? So in this particular prompt for you, the teacher, take 10 minutes to free write about your experiences of this course, right? This will help prepare you for the talk that you're about to give. But I think it also is, it's just a signal of authenticity, of trust, of you being willing to go where, where they're going to go also. But you are not going to ask them to go anywhere that you yourself wouldn't go, right? So this is you preparing to share your thoughts with them. And it says so here, right? Be prepared to share your thoughts and feelings and hopes for the students to, to wrap up the course. So in this final block, you watch the video, right? How to win at life. Watch this video in class and then remind the students of what they've learned, right? So most of learning I've learned is not forgetting. So it's good to go retread those, retrace those paths. In fact, Kieran always calls that reps, getting the reps or at bats, I think he calls it. And then this is the part where you literally just tell them your hopes and dreams for them. And the more real it is, the more you, you, you really dug deep here. I honestly believe that it will connect more with the students. So highly recommend that. Express your hopes, dreams and visions for who they can be and what they can do with what they've learned about entrepreneurship, God and personal vocation. Okay. Sounds, sounds easy. It isn't, right? I know that I'm the guy who, if I'm really speaking from the heart, especially if like I'm tired and I've been through some stuff. With people that are in the room, I tend to get a little bit, um, emotional, you know? I'll, I'll, uh, I'll get choked up from time to time. It's, it's happened. And I think that makes it even more real. I'm not saying I do it on purpose. In fact, I try to not do it. Because it's, it's kind of, um, humiliating, but it's also humbling. And I think those words obviously go together for obvious reasons, but, um. So if you prepare, one of the things I found is that the more I prepare, then it goes easier, right? So then this is the fun part. Well, I'm sorry, I'm skipping around. This is the part that's necessary that helps us in a big way. If you could have them, um, go to this link and share their testimonial, right? And we're starting to get these in. We've only been doing this three years. And this is kind of the end of the first year of, if you remember Stephen, a year ago, we were all in training on Zoom. Cause it was like right still during the height of the pandemic and we wanted to have a, a, a teacher training, facilitator training. So that was a year ago, Stephen. Can you believe that? So now a year later, we're actually starting to get testimonials in and they feel so good. Uh, it's just such good confirmation of like, this is good work. Um, and we're going to keep improving upon it. Uh, more about that here in a second. But then down in element two, as their final act in the seed course. Ask your students to think about what wisdom they would give to the next class embarking on the seed course. And then ask them to write it down in a letter of encouragement. I love this. Write a letter of encouragement and vice to an individual student who will be beginning the seed course during the next semester or term, what have you. Tell your students, I love this, tell your students that the letters will be sealed in an envelope. And opened only by the student receiving it at the beginning of the next class. Assure your students that they will, that you will not be reading the letter, but they should write their first and last name on the outside of the envelope, along with the date. Save the sealed letters and distribute them during block one of your next class. Now, I mean, okay, sounds simple enough. And I can feel that there might be some hesitation to do this for obvious reasons. And I, I think that that's partly mitigated by the writing of the name. Like you write your own name on the letter and the date on the, on the outside of the envelope, right? So that at least we know who created this and we can come back to you. And, um, I don't know, it kind of makes me think about like undergrads on college campuses. You know, piling up parking tickets, thinking that there's no enforcement, uh, when they graduate. But actually, you know, there is, a lot of times they'll hold your diploma until you pay your parking tickets or your library fines. So, um, but also like you know, these students, you have been with them on this journey. I would think that you would have a sense of whether you can trust them to do this or not. And I think also that even a, a, a student that might be a bit of a knucklehead is still going to be able to. This might be the one job that they take seriously, especially if you help them to see that this is an important job, that there is real purpose here. Um, and especially if the C program, if they've carried it out, like this might be, okay, here's an idea, just thinking on the fly here. You, if, if a student doesn't do all the work, like if they don't check all the boxes of having done all the work throughout, maybe they don't get to write one of these letters. I mean, that shorts you on letters. But there's a mathematical, you know, probability that you'll be short or long on letters any given time. So maybe, and I'm not, I'm rarely in favor of any kind of punitive action on a student. Uh, unless it's, you know, like they're being, you know, that they're hurting people. There's a difference there. But like, using this as a, a, an earned privilege, right? Like those students that did all the work and got it all done, um, they've earned the right to pass on their wisdom to other students. And those students that have like a ton of incomplete work, they don't get to, because they didn't actually do the work. Especially if we go back to this idea of pass fail as a grading, uh, philosophy. So just food for thought on that one. How's that, how's that make you guys feel? When you think about having students write a, a private letter to a student that you don't get to read about their experience? The wise.
Yeah, but if you on the, the don't get to read part, but. Otherwise I don't think about it. I don't know.
I don't think it's a, uh, completely off the table that you don't get to read it either, right? It, it, it doesn't preclude them from being sincere, right? Or saying exactly the same thing, like if they know that you're going to read it. So that's a kind of a take it or leave it kind of thing as well. Like I wouldn't be heartbroken if, if you read the letters. I really, I.
Yeah, but the process, the process I like.
Yeah. Cool. I think we've, yeah. All right. So any other thoughts or questions? Module 12 was like a slam dunk, honestly. Especially if you've done all the work to get here, just some, some wonky pieces about the moral compass. Uh, as far as the, you know, the, the parts that they have not already produced throughout the things that they have to tackle now. Um, and then the, the, the questions about where they put their work for the Odyssey projects post, basically. One question I had for you is how do we send them out with a bang, right? Like, okay, they've completed the seed program. Uh, do you, do you want to, are you conceptualizing any kind of like a graduation or a celebration?
Yeah, last year we did, um, we did a feast for everyone. So the whole.
Oh, that's awesome.
Brought food and we had, we were finishing presentations of their culture of life project and. Kind of talked to everyone and then, then let them go early for the day too, after that. So.
Oh, wow. I mean, it's hard for me to think of a better way to go out than to have a great meal and leave early.
Yeah, we knew that would, uh, no one would complain about that. So.
That's fantastic. Um, okay. Well, I know also like, uh, at Marin Catholic in, um, Marin County, David Friend actually invited Professor Burgess. And Professor Teddy and I via Zoom to their graduation ceremony. So the way that they do seed there is they have a two-year principled entrepreneurship cohort. And the C program is the first two semesters of that. So four semesters total, first two semesters is a, is a fairly modified. But complete seed program. And then David Friend invited, um, Rebecca and Luke and I to be there. And, and it was great because we, we talked, obviously we talked a little bit about coming to Catholic university. We talked a little bit about, uh, we celebrated them. And then David produced, uh, graduation certificates for all the students. And they had them like walk up to the front of the class, get their picture taken. And sponta- spontaneously, one of the students found pomp and circumstance on you, on like Spotify or something and played it on their phone. Like that wasn't David's idea at all. He told me later, like the student just did that. And it made it so cool. It was like, this is, and it just looped and moved and moved. But they actually, and we were all in the pictures and, and then they, um, they shared on their Instagram later. Uh, the, the school Instagram posted like a big selfie that they did with all of their certificates. And then they did like a goofy group photo and it was a pretty big deal. That was a lot of fun.
Was that for seniors?
They were, because it was in September, they were senior, they are seniors now. So they took the course as juniors and, and yeah, so it was, but it was in the classroom. It was in like their own little private 25 person seed graduation ceremony. It was so cool. I love the feast. Um, we are working on a new module for, boy, this, this groundwork session is going to be all full of all kinds of sneak previews. So we're working on a new module based on, so the concept is what would it be like to work for a saint? And we have a couple of real examples, right? And it focuses primarily on Enrique Shaw. The, uh, blessed Enrique Shaw from, uh, Argentina. He, he did some really cool things, uh, one of them being that it was the, called the business person's oath. And he actually created an organization around this oath of, of, you know, um, Catholic business people. And so one of the things that we're conceptualizing is, um, uh, is an event where the students actually do the work of, of scheduling and programming. And then hosting an event for the community, for parents and for the parish community or the school community. And at that event, the students, they're, they're, uh, they actually read their business person's oath that they created for themselves. So they're actually standing in front of their community and saying, I will do this. I will focus on these things similar and modeled by, similar to and modeled by the work of Enrique Shaw. So I think that would be really cool. And, and then they have a mass. Uh, they, they, they offer the sacrifice of the mass as, as part of this event. And one of the options then is that then they go and do an adoration, uh, holy hour. As a class and as a community, or they can pick and choose those pieces apart. So that's something that we're working on, an open sacramentum for a seed, basically a seed finale. So that's one way to think about it. And then there's simple things too, like for graduating seniors, they might get a seed stole, right? Like you might have a little, um, you know, branded stole that designates those students as, having been through the seed, uh, program in their experience. Or, you know, keep it simple, um, all kinds of ways. Just curious about how, because this is the end, how do we, how do we really like make it special for the students? And Stephen, I loved, I mean, of course, you know, food always, always speaks, right? That's the, the spontaneous order around the one thing that all humans have to do, and that is eat. And typically we like to eat together. So I love that. Okay. How about a sneak preview? This is, uh, from the work we're doing. We actually got a grant. For a self-directed version, to create a self-directed version of the seed program. We have been very surprised with the amount of homeschool parents that are fully trained. Are interested in te- teaching the C program. Uh, and one of the things that we've learned is that, well, those homeschool parents probably don't have a, a whole lot of time to take the journey with the students. So we need to modify it and make it so the student can kind of take themselves mostly through. Like we can't eliminate, um, the guide, or actually we're calling it a guide. Uh, the need to have an adult human being or someone to bounce ideas off of. There's so much of the C program that involves and focuses on, I mean, entrepreneurship focuses on the other. Uh, and I think that's part of the gospels too, is to serve others. That's how you love Jesus is to, you know, do unto others, right? For the least I did for them, I did for him. So, but we're, we're working on this project. And one of the early fruits was, and in fact, our, our subject matter expert that's helping us, I was like, please go and do modules zero and 12 first. These are the ones we want to start with, because we want to begin with the in and mine, these, these capstone deliverables. So right away, our subject matter expert got to work on it and her specialty is, um, in, in, in assessment, right? So she's created a couple of thing, the, these working rubrics that I wanted to share with you. Uh, let me pull this up. So this is the moral compass rubric that she has, is developing. It's not a whole lot different than what we've got. But one of the things that you can see here is that instead of modules in the self-directed program. We're actually reshaping them, remodeling them as individual quests. So your module one is about, uh, you know, creating your ideal life, envisioning your ideal life and the. Pardon me, the, the project is that they write their eulogy. Well, in this case, we're actually saying that it's, your quest is to live an ideal life. And prepping for writing, prepping for that life in part is envisioning it completely. And that's why we have you write the eulogy. It's just a tiny little, probably not much of a difference, right? But you can see where in the, in the rubric, we're grading based on their, their quests, right? And how we do that. And there's a part where we're actually going to get to quest. And how we do that. And there's a part where we're actually gonna get to Quest Four. And then after Quest Four, which would be Module Three, once they get into Modules Four, Five, Six, Seven, Eight, and Nine, we're gonna turn those into quests, but we're not gonna number them. They actually get to kind of pick their, where they begin. They can do them all simultaneously. They can, you know, move about them however they want. We kind of unbundled the sequence of those. So that's something we're experimenting with. So the Moral Compass Rubric that's under development is not very much different. But one of the things you'll see also is that, has the student really connected to the three parts of a moral compass and what they are? So basic principles, ergon, right, which is your purpose, and then virtue. And these are actually described in, described in the, the Moral Compass Lecture by Professor Vidner. That's included in Module One. So just, just a little preview there. The big thing that we've got going that I wanted to show you is this overview document. So one of the pieces of feedback that we've got is that students kind of, you know, when you say that they're gonna have this Moral Compass project, you know, they might have a story in their head about what that is. We just needed to put more meat on the bone, a little bit more granular detail for those students that would benefit from it. And so we've created this overview document, and it sticks to this idea of the Moral Compass being basic principles, ergon, and virtue, right? And so we're, immediately, we're reinforcing this. So this is something that, and then one of the things that we took is those nine. Here, you'll see the, the nine deliverables, right? We've matriculated those out over the three big buckets of what a moral compass is. So I think this is not necessarily the rubric, but this helps to create the framework in the mind of the student at the very beginning of the class. So having this as a reference guide throughout, I think would be very helpful. And in fact, for those of you that came to the call, allow me to share with you the overview doc link in the chat. How about that? How about that? Here we go, Stephen. You can take a look at this. And would love your feedback. And then here's the, the rubric as well. And those of you that are joining on YouTube, we will have the links in the description, so that you can access those. In the description on YouTube, you'll be able to access those. So there's the rubric. Then this overview doc, I love this. So again, working on creating documents and media that help the student to understand what is the goal of the course? And these things we're calling the Moral Compass and the Odyssey Project, what are they? And so we've created this overview document, right? Your personal journey. So written with the student in mind, right? That's, that's what the voice is. So talking about, here's the introduction. And it's, it is quest-based, so you would have to do some, some translation here if you use this. It, like, Quest Five is actually Module Four, so we'll work on that. But some things for them to think about, right? Just a way to kind of, I like to say it's a shot across the bow for them. No, I'm not signed in. A shot across the bow of like, what is this thing? And again, it's a work in progress. So one of the really simple and easy ways we're working to improve the seed experience for students is by creating more kind of overview documents, some things that kind of help the student to connect the dots for themselves. And then we've got a new rubric that we're working on for the Odyssey Project. Now, this, this piece I really like. Like, I think we're really getting somewhere with this. Because the project is essentially a portfolio and then a presentation, it, it kind of made it simpler in my mind when we came up with this, right? So their, their core of the, of what they're doing, right? So are they telling a story? And then, did they cover all the stuff, right? So span of the narrative. And then is it long enough, right? We, we would suggest we want no less than a thousand words, okay, in the post. And then now it down to the, the, the creative stuff, right? Did they use all of these things, right? One to two gets them one point. Three or more pieces of multimedia resources gets them two. And then it's actually over here, this is really cool too. It's, it's weighted, right? Weighted heavily to, did they tell the story, right? Did they do the work? And then the presentation, they get five to seven minutes. If they fit into that timeframe, they're good to go. So just some, some previews here of things we're working on here at the Catholic University of America, the Bush School of Business at the CEOPA Center for Principal Entrepreneurship. And that, my friends, is what I've got for you today. I really appreciate you joining. I wonder if you have any questions or wondering, anything that you would like to share?
These overviews are awesome. Thank you.
That's a pleasure. Always a pleasure. And again, not my work. That's the best thing. It's like, I got help. Oh, I love it. And, oh, so good. Such good help. Oh, one thing I didn't, okay, so I did make a note for myself. Talking about the end of the, the corpse, right, for your students. One last thing, because if you did this, or if you didn't, it's still a good time to start. But when you're covering the creation of value in Module Three, one of the things we suggest is that they play pit. I don't know, Stephen, have you guys played any pit down there, Frasati?
Yep. Did it this semester.
How did this, how did the students feel about that?
Oh, they loved it. It was awesome.
Because it's awesome, right? It's so much fun. So one, one suggestion I had for the Seed program kind of close ceremony, or, you know, the, the graduation, was maybe you play one last game of pit and have an auction, you know? Like, hey, let's just have some fun here. That could also be the alternative, like, hey, if you want to leave early, you're welcome. But we, the rest of you, for this last thirty minutes, we're gonna play pit and do an auction at the end. Just to have some fun. So there's, that's all, that's one of the things I love about pit, is it's just a total hip pocket thing, as long as you've got an auction. So food for thought there. Other than that, my friends, I wish you a very Merry Christmas. I hope that you have a beautiful, focusing, revelational Advent. And I hope to see you back here in January. We're gonna change things up for next year for the groundwork sessions. We might actually change the times as well. Still working on that. But we're going to, we're going to have some guest professors, perhaps Professor Vidner, Professor Burgess. And we're gonna focus, really focus in on some specific elements of the Seed program that they teach well, that they're, they're kind of experts in. So we're gonna have some, we're gonna be bringing in some expertise and unbundling from the module sequence and going into the, the content itself. That's the plans for next year. So we'll be emailing and putting out notices about the schedule for that. So, but in the meantime, God bless you, and thanks for coming. Merry Christmas. Have a joyful Advent.